To the flag of the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All city councilmen are present. There's a copy of the Open Meetings Act. It's posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public. First item is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council, will be reenacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on these meetings. D, approval of minutes of the regular meeting on July 3rd, 2023, is on file by the city clerk's office. E, approval of the treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $758,975.42. Approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $75,024.83. Item G, approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts. Item H, approval of pay request number five in the amount of $70,000 for the WPC to 3FI Incorporated for the June 2022 hailstorm as recommended by the Board of Public Works. And item I, approval of pay request number six in the amount of $52,404 and four cents, public properties building to 3FI Incorporated for the June 2022 hailstorm. Anybody want anything pulled off? Seeing none, Mr. McLean.
I move the items listed under the consent agenda to be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Say again. All those in favor? And that passes eight zero. Tonight, we'd like to welcome our guests from Olson's. We're going to move them up to the front. Thank you for making the trip down here. And they're going to do a presentation on the concept for the Court Street Corridor Study Presentation.
Thanks. Where are you on us?
Right up here.
Think we got him, but I'll take another one. There you go. This is bigger.
Placement. Talking to the mic at all?
Yes, please.
Okay. Trying to pull that out.
All right. We'll turn it over to you guys. We'll turn it over to you guys.
Okay, thanks. My name's Austin Vokel. I'm a landscape architect at the Olson Studio.
I'm John Olson, and I'm on Olson's roadway design team.
They recognize us from the two public open houses that we've held here over the past few months, but we're here to talk about the Court Street Corridor Master Plan that we've been working on for the city. So we can just dive right into the document here now. Starting out, we kind of based the study on the original 2011 downtown master plan and kind of pulled a lot of our assumptions from that. The first being that the reroute of Highway 136, one block south off of Court Street as just kind of a general assumption for us. So the entire study base is based off of kind of that project happening first and then kind of looks at what are the opportunities and constraints associated with that project? And how do those affect any sort of pedestrian improvements that could happen along Court Street? So with that, we had five main, kind of five main objectives in the master plan. Help retain and attract businesses to the corridor. Provide a welcoming image to visitors. Support an active downtown. Create a comfortable pedestrian environment. Improve downtown parking. So through the process, every decision that we made, we kind of kept those five fundamental things at the forefront of our mind with the ultimate goal of supporting and improving each one of those. Next page talks about that a little bit more in depth, but we can kind of skip forward through that. Like I said, this is just a, on the next page is a brief timeline for the project. Just evolved the various stages that have happened from 2011 up until now and various projects and improvements that have happened and steps that have been taken to get to this point. Like I said, we've been working on this since March when we had our first stakeholder engagement meeting. Kind of put together preliminary master plan, held our second open house, which was open to the public. Kind of sharing our initial concepts for the corridor, seeking feedback and looking for any thoughts or responses from the public that we could incorporate into the plan on that. Following that, we worked on the final master plan development, and that is the document that you see here right now. So that was kind of a little bit of the backstory. The existing site really stretches from Second to Eighth Street. A few pages ahead, you'll see the proposed layout for the highway with the roundabouts. So really from roundabout to roundabout, kind of looking how to tie into that project and make improvements in between those two tie-in points. So on the page that says existing site analysis, we always like to start off and try to understand kind of what's going on in a place on every project, you know, get a good background on how things are working, how things are functioning. What's currently preventing the pedestrian environment from reaching the goals that you want to see as a city? And what can we do to help ease some of those constraints or look for any other opportunities that we should consider within the plan? The main kind of finding that we found, the main finding that we saw during this phase of the project was just the existing routing of Court Street and the hindrance upon the pedestrian or the sense of comfortableness that pedestrians have along the corridor. You know, the high speed and frequency of vehicles creates an environment where the pedestrian and storefronts can feel secondary to the movements of cars and trucks. And we found that this causes a subconscious sense of discomfort when walking the corridor, which can be detrimental to businesses and urban building types that require certain amount of walking to be able to access. So kind of in summary, you know, downtown buildings, parking isn't always close and easy to get people there. And so anything that you can do to make the walk that is necessary feel shorter than it really is, really goes a long way to help and support existing businesses and spur new business as well. On the next page, we kind of analyzed the proposed reroute of that and what that would do to the corridor itself and some of the intersections. We found really, as you probably well know, that just by removing a lot of the high speed and vehicular truck traffic from the corridor, it kind of, it helps create a calmer, more pedestrian-friendly environment where, like I said earlier, where the pedestrian feels secondary in the first, in the existing layout, now they feel like this is a place that they're supposed to be. Without the subconscious discomfort of walking next to a highway, people are more likely to walk greater distances, support businesses in the corridor, and stay and linger longer. So that will go to our stakeholder engagement section. Like I said earlier, two public open houses were held to solicit stakeholder feedback. Really well attended. I was really pleasantly surprised at just the amount of excitement and how generous people were with their feedback during these two sessions. Really, the biggest items that came from that were the two biggest things that we wanted to consider moving forward from there. There was some concern amongst members of the public just of, you know, the thought of rerouting the highway. Would that really pull people off of Court Street? You know, maybe my business will feel a little bit more difficult to get to. So one of the goals that we wanted to provide to address during the master plan to help, you know, ease those concerns was just visibility into the corridor, right? We want to make sure that wayfinding and signage and design features at those two main intersections on Second and Eighth really support and provide a lot of visible access into the corridor so that, you know, if you're not a truck, if you're just somebody in a passenger vehicle, you get the sense that you want to stop, you want to continue along Court Street, and that something's happening there. It looks like a place that you want to visit. The second idea that we wanted to pull through from what we've heard that kind of helps support this too, is that Court Street should be a place that people want to be. It should be a place that people will go out of their way to and a place where people want to, like I said earlier, stop and linger and spend time in. This is just a really straightforward thing that we will preach on every project, right? You want to make sure that the place that you're planning for is successful and just make it a place where, that people identify with. So on the next page, the proposed street section, we were directed and we think this is a good way to start off with, but maintaining the existing curb line so that the, you know, the existing curb remains in place. It's even on both sides, like it shows up on the top section. Within that, we have the opportunity to help support one of our main goals, increase parking, by doing a kind of offset roadway with parking, diagonal parking on the north, leave parallel parking on the south, lose a turn lane, and then still have two one-way lanes in each direction. So one of the main concerns with diagonal parking that we've heard from the community was just the examples along Fifth Street and how they can feel a little bit tight. So we kind of studied that a little bit and wanted to make sure we don't repeat the same mistakes. As you can see, Fifth Street has about 14-foot, this is kind of a rough measurement, but around 14-foot parking bay. We kept it at a more typical 19, so there's plenty of room for, you know, people who don't pull up all the way or larger vehicles to have enough space that they don't encroach in the travel lane. So it should be an easier layout or a more functional layout than what people are accustomed to along Fifth Street.
Now, you have two types of parking there, right? On this new street?
Yep.
Diagonal parking and parallel parking.
Yeah, that's correct. So there'd be diagonal on the north side of the street and then parallel on the south. Kind of really similar to how it is right now. As for the master plan, really, the master plan proposes to re-envision Court Street as a pedestrian first place where people of all ages and backgrounds desire to be. The two roundabouts proposed in the Highway 136 rerouting plan should be enhanced with features designed to announce the corridor's prominence as a vibrant and interesting place. Wayfinding features should also be included that intuitively signal to non-truck traffic that there is a downtown worth visiting. The three central, three central blocks of the plan are envisioned as a traditional urban streetscape with enhanced pedestrian paving that provides flexibility to everyday users of the corridor, as well as the ability to accommodate a wide range of potential events. Street trees and planting beds should be thoughtfully placed to provide shade and aesthetic benefits to these blocks. A range of pedestrian furnishings and amenities, including seating benches, bike racks, trash receptacles, et cetera, should also be used to provide, it's still on? Sorry about that. It should also be used to facilitate a sense of comfort in place. Finally, there's an opportunity for a canopy of festival-style string lights over the street that create a ceiling along the corridor and a unique nighttime experience that would be visible from either side of the street. The intersections of Fourth through Seventh should be enhanced with decorative paving to suggest that pedestrian crossings are of primary importance, helping to slow traffic at these key points. The blocks between Third and Fourth and Seventh and Eighth are envisioned as softer green blocks with less paving behind the back of curb. Instead, turf grass easily provides a soft green character along these two blocks. Pedestrian amenities should also be included along these stretches, but can be provided less frequently. Finally, there's an opportunity for stormwater gardens in many of the planting beds proposed along the streetscape that would also provide a unique character and help manage stormwater And then kind of the next few pages are the enlargements that you can kind of look over in more detail. But we also have the parking counts along the top of each block. As I mentioned earlier, one of our goals was to increase parking along the corridor. I think we've accomplished that on four out of the five blocks. The one being, the one that doesn't accomplish this is between Third and Fourth, but we maintain the same number of parking stalls. So we kind of flipped through that. We'll start here on Second Street. As I mentioned, with the two major intersections on Seventh or Second and Eighth, providing some sort of feature within the roundabout proposed on the relocation plan to help, you know, encourage movement and direct visitors through the roundabout to Court Street. We think that's an important thing to include within the streetscape project, even though it might be a little bit outside of what might be thought of Court Street as a scope. Moving forward, Third through Four-
On your Court Street Corridor Master Plan-
Yep.
I see that you have, able to have cars come down that Court Street. You've got these bump outs. What's the measurement between those bump outs? That's where we have a lot of trouble on Fifth Street.
Measurement between the bump outs from across the travel lanes?
Mm-hmm.
So it would be 23 feet, so two 11 and 1/2 foot travel lanes.
Well, on your Fifth Street, you've only got 22, and you said it'd be how much?
Is this, are these lanes going across Court Street or across Fifth Street?
Well, I'm comparing this with Fifth Street. We have trouble in Fifth Street-
Okay.
-with the bump outs and such. And according to this, the, you've got 22 feet on Fifth Street, and you said how much on Court Street on between the-
23. So there'd be one extra foot compared to what you're know now on Fifth Street.
That's enough room. Street to corner.
Well, I'd like to just add a little bit on that, but the reason Fifth Street feels so tight is just what you've already talked about, is your standard diagonal parking should be about 17 to 18 foot, which is what they were doing in their design. Fifth Street now, as it currently sits, only 13 and 1/2 to 14 feet. So you get the rear end of those vehicles sticking out, 3 foot, which really shapes up that way of traffic. So I don't want you to get caught up on the lanes of traffic. That's appropriate, 11, 11 and 1/2, 12 foot. That's what we want to see. But parking is what is really causing that squeezing feeling you feel on Fifth Street right now.
Okay. That's what I was wondering about.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, then from between Third and Fourth, you can see those kind of softer green blocks that I was talking about, a little less hardscape-heavy, but just a nice, easy way to create a unique feel along those two blocks. Plenty of street trees to provide shade, help with the walking experience, like I said, wanting to make it comfortable and encourage people to walk further. Then Fourth Street, you can kind of see the pedestrian intersection or the nodes improvements that I mentioned earlier. That would be colored and textured paving. At this point, it can be any, anything, right? This is kind of a high-level master plan, so we're not picking out specific paving or textures or anything. We're just recommending a type of improvement in this intersection. On either side of that, east and west, you would, you can kind of see the planters there. They would be the stormwater planters that I mentioned earlier. Those, if you've been to Lincoln along P Street, you can kind of think of those as the more sunken-in ones that collect runoff. Really, they, the ones there are really well-maintained and taken care of, and they become kind of a unique garden amenity along the streetscape that you don't quite see everywhere, which is really nice. And then on the next page, between really Fourth and Sixth Street, on both blocks, it's kind of a standard, traditional, well, not standard, but a traditional kind of urban streetscape, as I mentioned, a little bit more hardscape behind the back of curb. You can see on the plan, there's some of those amenities that I mentioned earlier, seating, tables, chairs, plantings, and then the lights going over the roadway. And then also between the blocks of Fourth and Fifth on the south side of the street there, you can see that lot, I believe it's that building that was torn down last year or recently, that there's an opportunity to, you know, either permanently or temporarily, you know, use it as an active public space that could, you know, help support kind of the goals of the downtown. Then on the next page, again, as I mentioned, between Sixth and Seventh, it's that same type of urban-style block within, with more paving. And then between Seventh and Eighth, where the roundabout ties back in, again, it's that softer green block. And then within the roundabout, a similar feature is shown, as I mentioned earlier, along Second Street. Then the next few pages are just kind of character images that we had shown during the open house, that people had said that they liked. Again, these are just sort of big ideas on what you could include in the next phase of the plan. And then on the very last page, probably the most important one, the opinion of probable cost. Like I said earlier, we weren't picking out specific improvements, but we came up with a range of costs that we could see this project costing once it gets into a more refined design. On the low end, the total opinion of cost, including engineering, design, and construction fees, three, around $3.5 million. And on the upper end, $4.8 million. And for reference, what was shown on the plan, on the master plans, is more in line with the higher-end cost. The lower end is just including some cost-saving items that are, you know, switching out materials, things like that. So just kind of typical VUI items that you could expect. That's the end of it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
We'd have the moving of the highway cost on top of this, correct?
Yes.
So we're probably looking at what, 6, 7, 8 million?
The highway? About 10.2.
Yeah.
Then this on top there.
Correct.
Correct. Maybe I should not.
Not unless you have a really big life insurance policy.
Not tonight.
And please don't do it now.
Don't tell her.
Don't do it now.
Don't do it tonight, Rich. Stick around.
So I guess I got a general question, looking at it, and I've looked at it in the package that we've been sent. And I'm looking at the businesses on the north side of the road from Second Street to Third Street. So would, so the businesses, the rail, would that mean their only entrance would be off of Ella Street to get into their parking lot?
I believe that's part of the highway layout, right?
On these pages, I can hear-
From here to here.
Master plan, Second to Fourth Street.
Of Second to Fourth?
Yeah.
So between Second or Third and Fourth, we've maintained all of the curb cuts that they have access to now, so those will all remain in place.
Yeah, you're correct. Between Second and Third Street, the access points on the north side would have to go back.
Around Ella Street and north of Third Street for those two businesses.
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I have a couple, I guess. Sorry. So we've been talking about this for decades in this community, literally, and you guys have been involved for a long time, too. John, Austin, are you with one of you, why roundabout? Explain to us why we need to have roundabouts on both sides of our, of this project.
Well, you know, roundabouts actually offer quite a few benefits to the public. I mean, but they're, for one thing, they're a safer intersection. So you're going to have a new intersection that's going to allow traffic to basically kind of mix. You've got Highway, you know, 136 traffic coming through there and going down south to Market Street and around, and you've got traffic that's going to mix that wants to go into Court Street. So you've got that type of intersection where it's a safer type of intersection. So it's going to be a lot safer for the general public driving through that intersection. It's also going to move cars better than any other type of intersection. If you were to look at the reverse curve option, there's really no, it's a stop control intersection. There's no traffic control to allow traffic to freely go onto Court Street with that option. The roundabout option that does allow that allows basically that right-of-way for someone who wants to turn and go onto Court Street. So you won't get that with the other alternative. Part of our scope this time on this project right now was to look at the cost between the reverse curves and the roundabouts. They actually come in exactly the same. And basically what the trade-off is, is the roundabout option costs a little bit more on the paving side, but where we save the money on the roundabouts is with the less property. Roundabouts are a lot more flexible. You can, you can kind of move those intersections around where you can't with a standard stop control intersection, you know, the lanes have to go straight through. You don't get that with the roundabout. The roundabout allows you to make the curvatures that you need, where you can actually slide the roundabout to a location where, and in this situation, we're able to keep those roundabouts within the existing right-of-way a lot better than you could with the reverse curves. So you're taking a lot more property with the reverse curves option, and that's kind of where we made up the difference in the cost. So that's, they really ended up being really close to each other. They're both right at 10.2 million for both, both options. But overall, we would recommend the roundabout option just for those particular points that I just mentioned.
And they're a lot less expensive to maintain than streetlights.
They are.
So how many street, were you done, Terry? Can I ask something else?
You just fire right in here, because I might take a little bit.
How many streetlights will we lose off of Court, Fifth, Court Street, Sixth Street, and Ella? How many streetlights do you lose? As I, because I didn't see any in any of the plans.
So along Court Street, we kind of left that vague at this time. That would be up to the city on what you guys want to do at those intersections. But, you know, there's flexibility in there to, you know, potentially leave them all in or take as many out as you feel appropriate. I'm not sure along the Second and Eighth.
Feasibly, we could get rid of every lane but like Sixth and Court with highway 77 traffic.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe Fifth and, but maybe Sixth and Ella.
You were talking about traffic lights, right?
Traffic lights, yeah. Maybe Ella, 11 and 12, Marcus Ella, maybe.
So kind of getting back to Terry's question on roundabouts, but don't you also find that there's maybe a little more of a marketing opportunity? You're slowing the traffic down.
Absolutely.
If you build it right, they're going to see a vision, and so that vision can drive people downtown versus the highway.
Those are all great points. Yeah, you're exactly right. What the roundabout's going to do, the reverse curve option, you're going to have people coming on 136, and they're not going to really stop. They're just going to kind of go around downtown and not even stop and be able to slow down. You're exactly correct. With the intersection with the roundabout, you're going to be forced to yield before you enter into that roundabout. And we've got a central island, a circular island, that could be landscaped however you want. I've seen across the nation some amazing things that have been done with the central islands of roundabouts. And you can put signage in there that's really going to maybe allow you to point down, you know, Court Street saying, this is, this is our entertainment district. This is where we want people to go. You're going to get that ability. With the roundabout, vehicles are going to basically slow down from, you know, basically almost a stop condition. They may slow down to 10 miles an hour if there's nobody in the, in the circle itself, but it slows them down to 10 miles per hour, where you won't get that with reverse curves.
Okay. Sorry, old marketing hat.
Yeah, no, thanks, Terry.
Because, you know, I mean, the bottom line is, if you think about it, one of the real winners here is the Cage County Museum right at the end of the curve at Second Street. And if you look how the, how the community, first off, John, you sold me on that after the first hearing, okay? It's just, it's just a question that comes up often to me, okay? When if you look at our community, you actually come downhill from the east and with a couple of changes of things, both the west and the east can be very attractively designed that way with roundabouts. It just can. And so I appreciate that thought. Have you guys actually done this before in a community similar to what we're talking about here?
Not exactly, but it was-
I know you've got roundabouts all over Lincoln you've been worked on, but-
This is a really pretty unique situation. You know, we haven't run into a situation where you can reroute a US highway the way you guys, you know, are looking at proposing here. So that's pretty unique. Have not run into that in any other community as far as I'm concerned. I don't know about-
Austin, you know someplace?
There's one about 35 miles straight east of Mexico, Missouri. Right on the highway, they've got a roundabout that, it's right, there's a school here, the roundabout's in the center, it's where two highways merge, and yep, if you do, I wish I could tell you the name of the highway, but I take it from Jeff City to Iowa City. Goes, but yep, it's, when the first time it said roundabout, I had, and I went, really? But yep, it's two, it's double lanes, semis are on both sides, the run, yep. It's where two major, two state highways intersect.
Terry, did you mean just having a roundabout that intersects a major highway with a main street or what?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if I have any personal experience on a project, but I have seen this kind of design feature used before in different kind of newer mixed-use developments where they, you know, intend to, like, John, you were mentioning earlier how they kind of cause people to slow down a little bit and get people's eyes on the corridor a little bit more than they would if they were, you know, driving fast and, you know, they might, maybe they didn't have to stop at the light, you go by it, but it's great just for that, those extra eyes that you can get on a retail corridor, just so people understand, "Oh, hey, I can see down there, there's, there's things going on," where.
It's definitely something we want.
Mm-hmm.
It's a busy business downtown, obviously.
I have seen it implemented, but not on a project that I've worked on. Like John mentioned, it is kind of a unique situation that hasn't come up very as often.
So I'm not gonna, I know this is all conceptual, so I'm not gonna get into the probable cost, but I think I understood almost everything on there except two items. One is Alleyway Park. I don't know what that is.
That is the property that I had mentioned, that vacant lot.
Over here, that we just knocked a building down on?
Yeah, on the, on the south side of Court Street.
I was just curious about that. And the other is, what is mobilization? I mean, it's a chunk of money you've thrown in there along with everything else, but what is that?
So typically, when contractors bid on a project, they, they want, basically for state projects and a lot of city projects, we include a mobilization item, and that basically allows them to get money paid upfront in order to get their materials get set up on a project. So it's basically.
Yeah. And I'm gonna shut up. I could, I could go forever here. One last question. If we, August 1, said, "Let's detail this, okay? Let's go into design of this project here," what kind of timeframe are we looking at with you guys if we decided to do it and we decided to do it with Olson? Do you get involved with that, or is that another department, or is that you guys?
We would definitely want to be involved in that. Just depends on the workload. I would.
Kind of depends on the funding as well.
Yeah.
I mean, it depends on the funding source, and if it's any federal dollars, there's gonna be some environmental work that has to go along with it, which will basically kind of delay it, you know, that whole process. It makes the process a little bit longer.
Sure.
So you could be looking at a three- to five-year timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
But if it's all local dollars, or if you've got DOT dollars that they could put into it that don't require federal fund, any kind of federal oversight or any kind of NEPA document, I think you could probably get through that design process and probably have this thing under construction in probably about two years.
So we'd need a year to get to the final design, is that what you're saying, and then we have to bid and do everything?
Through the final design, yep. It'll, it'll take, yeah, it'll take probably six, six months to, to a year to get through that design process.
I was just curious, 'cause it just seems like engineering firms have us where they want us or something right now, because we're, we live and die with you guys on every project just about, and we have a lot, this council wants to do some things here as quickly, but as, in a right way and as transparent as we can possibly do it with everybody downtown. But we'd sure like to not wait five years before we start on this, you know?
Right.
Yep.
So, for example, we're working on a project in Lincoln redoing the streetscape of Medonnes along O Street, very similar project, another, it's also a state highway, and I believe we wrapped up the master plan of that sometime around, around this time last year, and we are just getting started on exactly what you said, when could we get going on, you know, actually designing and detailing it, and I'm, I think some of that, you know, it was just the city's process on how fast, quickly they wanted to move through it, but, you know, like John said, sometimes there's a little bit of due diligence to do beforehand, you know, just from surveying and funding and everything that can cause a little bit of a slowdown.
Did you say that the, the states are having, letting you move a highway in Lincoln?
Oh, no, we're not, we're not moving it. It's just another streetscape project.
That was one of my questions, was, we've never taken this to the state before or anything, have we, Dory?
We have. We've talked to the Department of Transportation numerous times on this project, and they have been supportive of it.
They have been supportive of it?
Yes.
'Cause I remember, Ted, what was that guy's name, Rich something from the state with the.
Rich Ruby?
Huh?
Rich Ruby?
Is he still there?
No, Rich Ruby's been gone for a number of years.
Yep.
Rich, it was, it was the very first meeting that we had, honestly, with them, and it was.
Rich Ruby?
No, 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 about less than a year ago, but say approaching a year. We went to the Department of Transportation and had really good representation there. Myron put it together for us, we appreciated, and we had people from the governor's office and the head guy from the Department of Transportation, and they were all very positive about this project. They were, and hopefully they'll help us fund some of it if we get to that point, but they were all very, very positive. We walked out very, feeling very good from that meeting.
Well, we couldn't even get Rich Ruby to put up a traffic signal for us.
Times change, people change.
If he's still there.
All right, other questions?
Excuse me, Myron, I didn't, hope you didn't read my lips.
Well, thank you very much. You know, as I say, this is a conceptual plan, and I think, you know, the question about how many have they done, I think we sit in a really unique position, because if you looked at a reroute, and I don't want to pick on any community, but I'll just mention Geneva on Highway 81, I wouldn't be very excited about that. When you have the opportunity to move the highway just one block and you're able to highlight your downtown with some pretty roundabouts and, and the natural things that they suggest, that's a whole different ballgame. So, yeah, I thank you for your efforts and your time.
Yep, thank you all for your time.
I'd like to add one more thing, the facade monies that we've been doing downtown. I did get a compliment on that the other day. A guy hadn't been through Beatrice in three or four years, and he drove through the downtown area, and he was just amazed at how nice and stuff that moves, so, you know, people are starting to look at that, maybe they'll get to looking at this and say, "Well, we want more of that."
That's a really good point, Rich. You drive downtown right now, there are lots, three or four different places where people are doing things through their buildings, so it will catch.
Just so people know where we're at, we're probably gonna digest this a little bit more, but I think it is time to make a decision, one way or the other, at least on the conceptual process, and so you'll probably see at least a resolution to consider this and adopting this conceptual plan on the first meeting in August, so.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
So we talked about a lot of different things tonight, Gary's program with the ordinances, and we, you know, and we, we've all had these conversations about everything that's going on, you know, new elementary school, changes that we'd make to Lincoln Street, 33rd Street, taking over the grade schools, those, the grade schools in the neighborhoods that would be gone, turned into residential areas, possibly having dumpsters, the structure gone, application to downtown, the downtown reroute. I mean, you, you put all that in one big pile, you're talking about a lot of money. But to get all that done, to change the city, the Beatrice in a positive way, that, that dollar, that dollar figure doesn't seem like that much money to spend. It really doesn't, and it seems like it's an attainable figure. So I'm just putting in my two cents.
Sure, nope, appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, a great job.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, before we go to any more discussions, we'll go back to public hearings. Tonight, we have a public hearing for the purpose of considering the application of the Beatrice Country Club Incorporated Doing Business as Beatrice Country Club, 1301 Oak Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a new application for a Class C liquor license. So we will call the public hearing to order.
You want to take Chet and my report and?
Yes. Yes. Do you gentlemen swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not the public truth? So help you God.
I do.
Okay, start with Chet.
Yeah. Planning and zoning report finds no reason to deny this. They currently hold a liquor license. They've had a liquor license for as long as I can remember, and don't see any adverse effects to the surrounding area by approving this.
I have the report for the Beatrice Police Department. They did a complete background check investigation on the manager, Seth Ray, as well as all the co-applicants, and there are four of them, Timothy Lotman, Tim Marie Killinger, Sue Beckman, and Tracy Garnett-Fershizer, and they saw nothing in any of those that prevent issuance of the liquor license.
The only thing I will add is, I think this is driven by the present owner wanting to retire, leaving a new opportunity to run the restaurant and bar there. Any comments from the council, from the public? Gentlemen, your vote, please. Whoops, motion, sorry, got ahead of myself. Motion to close the hearing.
I move the public hearing to be closed at 7:42 PM.
Second.
All those in favor? And that passes eight-zero.
I move that the application of the Beatrice Country Club Incorporated Doing Business as Beatrice Country Club, 1301 Oak Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class C liquor license be recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control for Commission for Approval.
Second.
Any further discussion needed? Okay, if not, your vote, please. And that passes eight-zero. All right, second public hearing denied is for the purpose of considering the adoption of Plan Modification SS to the redevelopment plan of redevelopment area number one.
Yeah, so redevelopment area number one's out by the industrial park. What we have here is an application from, got a couple of different names, some of you'll know as Precise Fabrication, some of you will know as Kenny Manufacturing, but he is looking to expand what was the Precise Fab building to the north, adding on about 52,000 square feet is what he's looking to add there. The base value will be about $1.5 million. What we're projecting to be final valuation is about $9.5 million. It will be a rather large expansion to that particular facility. It has been reviewed by CRA twice already, it's been reviewed by Planning and Zoning already, they've all recommended approval, so it comes back before you tonight, assuming your approval, it'll go to CRA yet on Friday again for final approval for this matter.
If he's expanding, does that mean he's gonna be putting in some more jobs?
Yes, it's looking like he's, will be adding on some additional jobs. He has not given me the exact number yet. I still think he's looking to see which lines he brings into that particular facility. The biggest change will be that the way this building will be lined up is, it'll be expandable to the north, so as he goes, he'll be able to add on additional bays and continue to expand the, the building to the north. He owns now all the way to where Zephyr Towers is at, he owns all of those lots in between.
Yeah, it is, it's a great opportunity, we're glad to have him in our community doing these expansions. Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, let's close the hearing.
I move the public hearing to be closed at 7:45 PM.
Second.
Your vote, please. And that passes eight-zero. That ends the public hearings, we'll move on to resolutions. First resolution is number 7090, adopting Plan Modification SS to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number one, Kenny Holdings Redevelopment Project.
I move the resolution number 7090 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Any further discussion needed? Seeing none, your vote, please. That passes eight-zero. Okay, next resolution is resolution number 7091, executing a loan agreement promissory note, deed of trust, personal guarantee, and all the documents necessary to issue said loan between the city and Southeast Pressure Washing LLC for an economic development loan totaling $30,000 from funds derived from the LB840 funds as recommended by the Citizens' Advisory Review Committee.
I move the resolution number 7091 be passed and adopted.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second, and discussion?
The application here is, again, from Southeast Pressure Washing LLC, which is Bryson Frayland. He contacted us, he's looking to borrow $30,000 to purchase the equipment necessary to start this business and get started with that. The only thing I would note is there's not a deed of trust. The collateral on this is a loan agreement, promissory note, personal guarantee, and a UCC filing. There's no deed of trust in this particular matter. He's got a cosigner for it. Repayment schedule is five years, 5% interest, first monthly payment starting in September 1st of this year.
No deed of trust.
No deed of trust.
From the public? Seeing none, your vote, please. And that passes seven with one extension. Okay, resolution number 7092, approving the construction contract award for project 001 in the amount of $24,999 as part of the CDBG Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Project number
I move the resolution number 7092 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So we received a CBG Owner Occupied Rehab Grant. That grant, what it does is it goes out, it got pre-applicants, then it went through and reviewed those applicants to see who qualified on the income survey or income levels. SEND is Southeast Nebraska Economic Development District is the one who's administering this grant for us. They then went out and looked at each one of the properties, did an assessment, saw what were qualified and what didn't. They then sent that work out for bids. You have to be one of their qualified bidders. It's a fairly simple process to go through. I think you just have to call SEND, go through about a half-hour worth of work. You see at least one local contractor's on that list, they got added on there in the last year. The grant will pay for up to $25,000 worth of work, which is why you see all of these bids come in at $24,999. Yes, if you look through there, most of these bids, they only got one bid on them. They couldn't get anybody else to bid these projects, so the grant covers that $25,000, so all these will pay for the grant, they don't cost the city any money. The other thing is, we are not allowed to know the applicant or the address that they are living at before you approve them. That is a requirement of the grant. Their fear is that if you do know the applicant or the address, that you may discriminate against them because of their socioeconomic status. So that's why we're not allowed to know those. Nobody at the city has any idea what those addresses or locations are at, so that's where.
Somewhere in the city, you're getting two different pieces that are gonna be approved by $25,000, a pop that you don't have to pay for, that's a win-win. I don't care where it is.
They, they still have to get a building permit and everything, so we're gonna know everything after the fact.
Yes, after the fact, you can find out, yes, they'll have to get building permits, all that stuff, yes.
You're not gonna say that after every one of these, are you?
I can.
I was gonna say, as to note, we have several of these tonight, and they all will have the same explanation. On this one, any discussion from the public? If not, gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes eight-zero. Move on to resolution number 7093, approving the construction contract award for project 004 in the amount of $24,999 as part of the CDBG Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Project number 21-HO-36035.
I move the resolution number 7093 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Any discussion needed? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes eight-zero. So now we'll move on to resolution number 7094, approving the construction contract award for project number 11 in the amount of $26,247 as part of the CDGB, CDBG Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Project 21-HO-3605.
I move the resolution number 7094 be passed and adopted.
Second.
The only difference there?
What I will note on this one is it is over $25,000. The property owner's responsible for all the cost over that number, and they have agreed to pay for that additional.
$248.
Yes, so they've agreed to pay for that, so they're responsible for that. You also do have a housing committee as part of this grant, you have to have a housing committee, they reviewed all of these, they recommended all of them, is the only thing I would note on these particular projects.
Gentlemen, your vote, please. Passes eight-zero. Resolution number 7095, approving the construction contract. Resolution number 7095, approving the construction contract award for project number 16 in the amount of $24,999 as part of the CDBG Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Project number 21-HO-36035.
I move the resolution number 7095 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Gentlemen, your vote, please? That passes eight zero. Resolution number 7096, approving the construction contract award for project 17 in the amount of $24,999 as part of the CDBG Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Project number 21-HO-36035.
I move the resolution number 7096 be passed and adopted.
Second.
And gentlemen, your vote, please? That passes eight to zero. Resolution number 7097, approving the construction contract award for project number 022 in the amount of $24,999 as part of the CDBG Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Project number 21-HO-36035.
I move the resolution number 7097 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Last time on these, your vote, please? And that passes eight to zero. Okay, there are no ordinance tonight. Next, we come to the public forum, the purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anyone here for the public forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to discussions and reports. First report will be Main Street Quarterly Report.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a long night for everybody, it seems. Thank you for the opportunity to be here in front of you guys and talk about our quarter three for your fiscal year report from Main Street Beatrice and on some of the progress that's being made by, by us and certainly a lot of others to make our, our community and our downtown better. To kind of, just kind of cover some of the big highlights, this, this last quarter has certainly been a busy one for us, a lot of it's been internal, as, as I've told you guys over the years, the, especially May and June are, are very busy months for us to stay involved with a lot of community happenings and also some of our own fundraisers. But one of the biggest things that's continued to take a lot of time, and probably more than maybe we anticipated for this year, has been the Paddock Kensington Project. When we were talking about downtown property strategies, well, that one wasn't as fully tied into some of our things, it has certainly been something we feel is well worth our time on. We have since, really, I guess, since the idea that this is going to be acquired by either Main Street or the City of Beatrice, we've made contact with 23 different developers. I think we have fielded phone calls and done tours with about eight or maybe closer to nine or so of those, several of them multiple times, even tomorrow, we've got another developer that will be doing their fourth tour on this quarter, mainly because they're bringing in architects or they're bringing in a contractor, and they're trying to put together really good RFPs for you guys, you guys have an RFP process that's currently out to try to change the hands and put this back into private ownership with the Paddock Kensington, and they're, you know, they're trying to make sure they understand what their cost might be, what they might need to be requesting from the City of Beatrice or from other sources, and obviously, we don't want to be in the way of, of helping them determine that, but it definitely does take time, and so it's been exciting. I think we've got at least four, maybe five developers that are seriously looking at turning in an RFP on this project, which is exciting. You're going to see probably everything from traditional housing to maybe an element of hotel and certainly some commercial, and so it'll be exciting to see what transpires. The deadline for these developers is August 4th, so I think we're kind of on the downhill slope towards that, that process right now. It's definitely a challenging property. We were, about a year ago, we were assuming that it would take about $3 to $7 million to rehab this property, and that's a large range, it depends a lot on what a person does in the property. Now that estimation is more like seven to 10, and that's just the, the reality of the situation that we have there. And so, you know, I know we, we're talking about the, the downtown highway reroute being expensive, you know, both phases maybe being around $15 million, but just keep in mind that we've got several developers that are looking at making around a $10 million investment with one property in this town. Obviously, they're going to need probably some assistance along that way, but that is something to, to kind of be aware of, so a lot of time's been put in there, but property development downtown has remained really active, not just this year, but we have been seeing a lot of activity with property changing hands. You guys have seen probably a few more properties, some key properties downtown that have sat around for a while, that are on the market, have had offers made on them, and hopefully we'll have new owners, new investment, and you guys can see the list of, of properties that we know of that have changed hands here of late, and it's, it's really pretty significant, and that's been something that's been a, a big effort of us, is trying to get some of these underperforming properties, maybe try to encourage some new energy in, in some of our ownership in, in certain key, key areas, which has been proving pretty successful. You guys already mentioned that, right now, as we've hit the summer, it's been a very busy time for renovations in our downtown. A lot of that is thanks to the CDBG grant that the City of Beatrice has pursued, that you guys have allocated towards facade improvement projects. I think Tobias and I would both agree that this one has taken more time and energy than maybe it should have, or that we would like to see, but we've nearly got everybody rolling, and we've got a few projects that are starting to cross the finish line, and so that's certainly exciting, but we are seeing a $400,000 grant essentially is actually unlocking closer to, I think, $800,000 worth of total investment with those projects, and so definitely something that, that is turning heads, it's making an impact. We've included in that project is a formerly condemned building, I guess it might still be condemned, that you guys have been significantly a part of 323 Court Street that the Hidos are working on, I think their estimations that they're going to put about $400,000 to $500,000 into a building that was once condemned, something we thought was going to be a liability to the city that was going to cost over a quarter of a million to tear down, so definitely continuing to try to make strides there. I know property owners are a little concerned downtown at the moment over property valuations, a lot of properties that went up in value that we've talked to are between 75 and 300% increase, and so there's certainly a little bit of anxiety around property taxes when it comes to downtown, so that's just something that I know you guys need to be familiar with. Not every property went up by that, there's a lot that stayed the same, but there was significant numbers of properties that really saw some valuation changes. Obviously, some property owners, I think, have chosen to turn in protest on that, and we try to help have conversations with quite a few property owners as we went through, through that process. On the entrepreneurship side of things, when I last talked with you, we had really seen a real spike in the number of people coming into our office and talking about starting new businesses. We have continued to see some really good activity in the number of businesses, I realized that number seven actually is wrong, and we added a couple more in there than, than that, and we have other businesses that are currently in the middle of some expansions, one of those being Clayball Pharmacy, a lot of you guys maybe haven't seen that, it's all been internal work there at 503 Court Street, but there's just a, a good, good level of activity. Now, the number of entrepreneurs coming into the office has slowed down this summer, we usually see that activity really peak at points of transition. Summertime is kind of more a time of getting things done, not so much a time of planning, so hopefully we'll see that pick up again here this fall, but have been seeing good activity on the types of businesses, including some really unique ones that we've talked about as a need for this community for a while, including Bicycle Repair, that's getting close to opening, hasn't quite yet, and also the Paddle Sports Rentals. Hopefully, we'll see if that's sustainable, but we, we certainly hope that, that it will be, but if you need a kayak, there's actually finally water in our river, so there's something there, so continuing to work on that. When it comes to the trainings, it has been a real exercise and some frustration for us, because even though we reached out to people winter of 2022 into 2023, trying to get these scheduled has been a real challenge. We do finally have, I think, all four of our workshops scheduled, it's going to look like we're really coming down the finish line with them. For whatever reason, all of these folks, the main time that they seem to have open and available, even going back to last winter, was August and September, and it's like, my lord, wasn't exactly making us the most comfortable with what we had agreed upon, but it is coming into, to fruition. We will have a business transition, a business transition workshop with Nebraska Business Development Center is coming up here in August, I should have written down the date of that, but we will be advertising that here fairly soon, it's about a month away right now, and then in September, we will have kind of a, a quick, we will do two programs with Center for Rural Affairs, one on, on business development, one on marketing, and then we will finish out the month of September with a mini Markitac workshop with Guru Nebraska, they're on, I think, the 26th of September, and so got a, a nice little series of workshops coming up here over the next couple of months in front of us, so really looking forward to, to getting those accomplished. Speaking of the marketing side of things, we have been continuing to try to finalize our, our marketing campaign, we've had some pauses along the way as we've tried to include some other community partners, and right now, we're, we're in some conversations with the marketing firm because, well, they've given us some really wonderful graphics, we really need that full plan to be able to implement a campaign, and we're trying to make sure that we get all on the same page, and so we're, we're luckily being able to get them to recircle their wagons, because what they had delivered to us, I think what they intended to be the final product certainly did not match where, where we were wanting to, to be on that, so we are getting close to finally wrapping that up and being able to put a bow and put that into implementation phase. Creative District has been moving along, a little bit delayed on that, that grant, but we are getting started on the main first project that was intended for that, which is our downtown holiday lights. You guys have probably seen that, Alex and Envision Landscapes, one of our, our good downtown, or good, pretty good Beatrice businesses is getting that started, and removing a lighting system that in some cases has been up now for right at 20 years, it's certainly served us well, but it, it's well past its prime at this moment, so excited for Alex to be part of that, and we're glad to be able to use a local business to, to bring that forward. And that, that kind of highlights a lot of the main things, I guess one, one thing that we did hear about, and that you guys have probably heard me talk about quite a bit, is advocacy work, Senator Dorn has been a, a big part of this, but the Nebraska Historic Tax Credit Program had gone away, it had sunsetted before this, this last session, so there was a lot of effort to try to bring it back, kind of at the 11th hour, it was brought back into play, and so we're super excited that the Nebraska Historic Tax Credit is back on the books for being a, a tool that we can use. It has been used for the project at Smith Schaefer Davis that's currently going on, it was recently used for a project that's right now wrapping up at 711 Court Street, that's the old Poling Drug Building, and it has the potential to really be a game changer at the Paddock Kensington site. What the state legislature passed is an improved version of that tool that brings the cap of, the, the tax credit cap raises it from $1 million to $2 million, and the percentage of eligible reimbursable expenditures from 20 to 30% for rural projects in communities like Beatrice. And so a project like the Kensington, which is very large, and when we're talking a $10 million project, they can easily hit that $2 million cap, so that $1 million was a real barrier, so it is already proving to be a game changer on some of these developers' pro formas and cash flow examples. Unfortunately, I think they were asking for $12.5 million a year in allocations, because of some of the constraints within state legislature, they were only approved $2 million a year, which is one project potentially, but they had a lot of funds left over from previous cycles, so going into this first year, they do have $15 million available in that program, which they, in the last nine years of that program's existence, they've only hit $15 million once, so hopefully that'll be enough to at least get the Kensington, the Paddock Kensington on there, that's certainly things that, that we will continue to hope for. Any things that's left of that $15 million this year will get rolled over to next year, plus an additional $2 million. Myron has told me there's been some conversations, I know the Revenue Committee has talked about trying to add additional funds to that tool, which may be really key to, to the success of the Paddock Kensington, or at least keeping the request upon the City of Beatrice as something that's more manageable. So that is certainly a key program that I, I want to thank the Nebraska Legislature, and certainly Senator Dorn, I was planning on thanking him, even if he wasn't here behind me, but thanking him for, for his work and kind of sharing the story of Beatrice and, and how this tool is impactful beyond Omaha and Lincoln. With that, I open this up to your questions, there's a lot more I could talk about, but I think that's plenty on a busy night.
I just have one, Mike, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the amount of work that you and your group has done towards Paddock Kensington, because huge thing, great benefit to the city for you getting it done. My question to you is that you had half a dozen or up to 10 developers that have come through and looked at this, have any of them stopped and said, this is too big for me, but maybe you have, you know, have you upsold us here, Michael, in downtown, as long as they, you can't do this, maybe there's something else?
We, we do have a couple that are certainly looking at things that are maybe outside of their traditional wheelhouse, because they, they do see opportunity in this property. The concept of adding an element of hotel is unique, it is a challenge, but.
Well, beyond that, I mean, if they're, what I'm, what I'm asking you is if they, they're, they're not going to be a developer of the Paddock, is there something else within Beatrice that you've sold them on?
We, you know, we, we certainly have, have told them about some of the opportunities. For some of them, I think it has put Beatrice more on their radar. The challenge is, with a lot of these developers, we're looking for a, a really unique developer that's willing to take on, this, this building's got, I think it's 48,000 square feet above grade, so not counting the basement, and, and so it's been a challenge, because we are finding developers that predominantly would never even look at a Beatrice. These are developers that usually just live in Omaha, live in Des Moines, live in Kansas City, we do have some that are more regional, but just the scale of this project has really attracted a different type of developer that's used to doing a 200-unit development, which aren't as common in, in a community like Beatrice. And so we certainly have, I, I know that at least one of the developers is strongly looking at other potential projects in, in Beatrice and Gage County, maybe two of them, just in the main core group that's looking at turning in RFPs. We have created some relationships with Engage, because they're better equipped to talk about things outside of downtown and certainly within Gage County than, than I am, I, I'm pretty focused on the downtown area, but we have certainly made that, that introduction.
That answers my question, thank you.
Yep. Michael, I'm almost embarrassed to even ask, I should note this, but have we actually been funded for the Creative District? Where's that at?
So we've been approved for the Creative District, they have given us our first $10,000, the kind of starter fund that comes with designation of the Creative District, but the $250,000 main grant, we are, we are, we're still in that process of waiting to see where, where we end up on that, so hopefully.
They've written the criteria yet?
I'm sorry?
Have they written?
Yes, yes, yep, it, it's all out there, so we're just, we're, we're within a matter of weeks of, of that determination, so we're, we're close. When I was last in here, I thought I was going to have it done within a couple of weeks after I last talked to you, ended up really being a couple of months afterwards, and so it's just been a delayed process.
Ted's Act is very right, all of us really appreciate both yours and Tobias's efforts on, on Kensington, it's a really big project right in the heart of our town, so we appreciate everything you guys did there.
Tobias gets to get a lot of emails from me of, hey, can you last minute meet with these people, they want to come over tomorrow and talk with you, and yeah, it's.
That's the easy part, you're willing to give all the tour, so I appreciate it.
And if Myron wouldn't be raising all the taxes on everybody up at the state, we'd be a lot better off.
Myron, you saw who said that.
I'm just glad we know who to blame.
You're doing a great job, buddy, you are.
You're doing a good job, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilman.
Yep.
Okay, the next discussion report is James with. Okay, the next discussion report is James with the Engineering Department, and he gets a double duty. WPC Department overview.
I thought about just shortening this up and coming up here and asking if there's any questions about what I do, but I thought that might go the wrong direction, so I better have a presentation here to go through. Yeah, so I'm just here real, tonight to talk about two departments in particular, the Engineering Department and the WPC Department. So with that said, we'll just kind of get right into this real quick and talk about the Engineering Department. There we go. So some of you might know my background. I originally graduated from Wichita State University with a mechanical engineering degree, but I've always worked in the civil field with all my experience. I also got my professional license in civil engineering. I've worked in the consulting field for 19 years and that range from everything from bridge inspections, culvert inspections, roadway design. Yeah, even sanitary sewer and water system design. So I had kind of a wide range of duties that I did prior to even coming to Beatrice, which really helped me, I think, in the duties that I perform today. Some of the licenses that I hold, of course, is my professional civil engineering license, but I'm also a certified floodplain manager. And also I have my wastewater operator license. This is class two, but because of the department head with the WPC required a class three. I'd taken that test a year ago and have that license as well, so. In terms of the staff with the Engineering Department, I have just two staff. One of them is Doug Zuloff, who's been with us for over 15 years. He originally came from the state where he was on the right of way division. Doug is my lead technician who does a lot of the drawings that we kick out for design work, but he's also my lead GIS person. So any of the information we collect for GIS, he's the person that puts it into the system for us, so. The other staff member I have is Barry Easley. He's been with the city for over 33 years. Barry comes to us from the, the Air Force Academy, not Academy, but the Air Force. Barry is a technician for me as well, but he's also my lead surveyor. Now, when I say lead surveyor, he's not a licensed surveyor. So he can't go out and actually do licensed plaits and licensed drawings for people, but he can do topographical surveys for our work that we do and base our designs off of. With the Engineering Department, I know we don't have a lot of the, the cool trucks and backhoes and things like that, but we do have some piece of equipment that, that we have to deal with every, every day and does have a dollar associated with it. What you see right here is just strictly a large printer and scanner that we have. So that's how we kick our drawings out is 24 by 36 or even the larger ones in lengths of 24 by whatever are the drawings that we can kick out and also scan. We have, some public has a hard time finding a place to do large copies of things and we have let public come in and we do those drawings for them, of course, at a price. But, but we get that a lot from some private citizens. I'd like to tell you that that piece of equipment, you know, we buy once and it's, we keep it forever. But I think the last time we bought it was around 22, 23,000. I think we've had it for three or four years. But, you know, with any piece of electronic equipment, pretty soon they stop servicing it. And then all of a sudden you have software go out of date and then you need to upgrade it. One of the beauties that we did last time, our old piece of equipment, we were able to give that to the electric department and they're currently using it because Chris Lindell at that time could keep it running a lot better than what we could. So maybe that's something we can look at doing in the future if we need a new piece of equipment as well. One of the other things we have is our GPS equipment. So that's actually the equipment you see there that we use to go locate a lot of the existing utilities with the GPS system. We can go out and survey manholes, survey valves, things like that. And that's what actually shows up on the GIS system that you see. It's, it's a representation of what we shoot out there in the field. We used to do a lot of surveying with this piece of equipment, but the problem with this is vertically or horizontally, it's very close, like within a tenth of an inch. But what we found is horizontally or vertically, sorry, it could be off half a foot to a foot. Well, some of our streets, when you only have a fall of about two tenths of a foot, you know, in, in a block, that doesn't do as much good, so we're having a lot of trouble. So what we recently purchased was a data collection system that requires only one person, so it's robotic. So instead of having to hire another person or take Doug out of the office to go with Barry out to do the survey work, Barry can take this robotic system, he sets up in one location. He walks around with the receiving unit and it will physically follow wherever he's at and he takes the shot. So it still takes just one person to do all of our survey work. So that's one of the improvements we've made that's really helped us in the last few years in terms of our accuracy of our drawings and making sure they're correct. So one of the first functions, I guess, that, that we do, maybe a lot of people don't know about is anytime a new subdivision comes in or they want to develop a piece of land, we start that review process in the Engineering Department. And we review that against all of our zoning ordinances and our subdivision ordinances. And that kind of sets off a checklist. And if you can see it right, here's one of the drawings and how we review it. And I often get blamed a lot of times for using too much red ink on things. But this is just the process that we have that we review it, make sure all the things in the zoning books and the ordinances are marked out for the, for the developer. Let's say we turn that back to them and then they make those revisions and then come back. And then before we even go into planning and zoning, those items are taken care of. One of the things that we try to do is make sure that we are following the book as close as we can because one of the worst things we can have happen to us is you did it over here, why can't I do that? By us being black and white and making sure that we're doing the same for everybody, it resolves a lot of those issues that we have. Floodplain management, we deal with every day. And as most of you know, we have flooding that occurs in Beatrice. And one of the things that Beatrice has done has been very progressive in our buyout program, meaning that properties that were located in the floodway or floodplain through federal grants and everything, we were able to buy those properties and completely demolish them and keep them out of the floodplain. But anytime a new development comes in, we review to make sure that are they in the floodplain and are they meeting our floodplain requirements?
James, is that red line select floodway? What is that red line?
Oh, you're going to make me try to go back here?
Sorry.
I think that's the 500 year.
That is the two mile city limit line. The green is the actual city limit line. So our jurisdiction goes out to the two mile line.
I'm with you.
So, yeah, that's what that is. What a lot of people ask me too is, is I think the last maps that we have updated for the floodplain were done in 2010. And are there new maps coming out? Yeah, they've studied it, but it takes forever for FEMA to approve those and adopt those. So even though I know they're working on it, I can't go off of what's projected. I have to wait until they physically adopt that before I can use that information. So currently we're still working off the 2010 data.
Can you see a lot of change?
There's give and take in a lot of areas. You know, there's some areas that come out, there's some areas that go in, and it's all based on the person who's doing the model and how they interpolate that model. It seems like that's kind of where the floodplain changes.
Army Corps, Army Corps engineers used to do all that mapping and.
Yeah, so a lot, a lot of times what they do is they hire a consulting firm, whoever, and they, they model that area and they turn it in and they have to go through public hearings. And then after the public hearings, then they adopt it, so. Try to get through this here for you. So one of the things that you also hear me preach about all the time is with the city Beatrice being over 10,000 people, we are a phase one community and we have to follow an MS4 program. So that is a stormwater program in which it just sets us in a tailspin in terms of development on all the regulations we got to follow. So I could have a presentation in that just itself, but basically when you hear me talk about detention cells where we have a development that comes in and they're required to have the runoff from their site match the post or their, their precondition, their postcondition has to match their precondition. So we're trying to take steps as a community to foster development and not having them not take up valuable land space of their own for these detention sites. We're looking at regional detention cells, ones that we can own as a city and say, we've already taken care of that for you. Come on into your development and we'll, we'll help you out so you don't have to use that land space. So that's just some of the components of the MS4 that we're looking at. But other things that we do are like our construction site, stormwater management, where you see the silt fence up. We do inspections on that and things like that. GIS mapping, I already talked about that a little bit. The great part about this is pretty much right now, our entire sanitary sewer system has been shot in with the GIS system. And that, what that means is every manhole has a location to it. Every manhole has a rim elevation, every manhole or pipe has an elevation associated with it. We know the material type and we know the length of it. Same with the water system. We GIS every part of the water system in terms of pipe material, valves and things of that nature. So we can click on this map and I could tell you, and a lot of times the drawings are also associated with when it was constructed. We can take that same data, and I think you've heard this before, and use it in models. So Steve Kelly with the Water Department takes that GIS information, puts it into a model. And let's say if you had a large water user come in, he can plug that into the model and see how will that affect our system? And then what do we need to do as a community to improve our water system to be able to handle that? Same with the sanitary sewer system. We now have that in place in a model. And if we had someone that came in and said, hey, I want to kick a million gallons down the sanitary sewer system. Can you handle that? We can plug it in and then I could show you right where all the sanitary sewer lines are going to be over capacity and what we need to do to plan to make those improvements. So it's been a great benefit in terms of that. And I think all the departments are trying to move to where they have iPads in their trucks and they have this GIS system on their, on their pads. When they're out in the site, they can scroll in and see what utilities are in that location and click on that data right there in their truck. So that's something that we're trying to get to. This is just an example of the mapping. We also have the floodplain on the GIS system, so you can see how busy it gets. Blue lines, of course, are water. Green line, of course, is sanitary sewer. Orange is storm sewer. We have electric lines on here, which is black and red, and then you have the floodplain. So all this information is at our fingertips in this system, so that's why it's so important. One of the things that we deal with every day as well, that's not just in design work, is encroachment permits. What we determine is an encroachment permit, anytime an entity, whether it be a contractor or whether it be a private citizen that does some sort of work in our right of way, we have them get a permit and we have to approve that. So whether that's a driveway, let's say they want to redo their driveway, we review that. If it's a sidewalk, we review that. Gas company or whoever is doing utility work, for example, Pinpoint, who is here tonight, we make them submit drawings and we review those drawings and issue an encroachment permit, being, meaning that we approve that location that they're proposing with an encroachment permit. So that really kind of controls everything that we do in our right of way right now. So now we're getting into kind of the heart of things with the Engineering Department. As most of you know, we do design work and we do that for the street, water system, NWPC. So that can mean anything from storm sewer, armor coating, milling overlays, basically the whole gamut. We help the street department with their one and six year plan, everything regarding the street system itself and even presenting new layouts for roadways for Ellis Street, so. Sanitary sewer line, like I said, we did the design for several of the extensions, if you recall, that we've done around town and the bypass system that's going in right now, we designed that. And we get into some minor lift station improvements, pump replacements, things like that. We also designed for the WPC Department. Water, Steve normally has three or four water line improvements every year. We design those in-house for him so that he can go straight to the field and install them as soon as we get done designing them. Public properties, a lot of people don't think about engineering with public properties, but we've done a lot of work with public properties over the years. Whether it be field number one, the new softball diamond complex at Hannibal, whether it be a new trail of East Court from 24th to 26th. Any of those improvements or sidewalks or things that we do in public property, we try to help with that. Or the parking lot down at Standing Bear Trail and the detention cell that we do down there. We've done design work for the public properties as well. So with that, probably the big question is, okay, what value is that to the city? Well, just in design work alone, normally the Engineering Department designs around $2 million worth of projects. That's just from street, water and sewer. So it's a pretty big number, right? When I was in the consulting world, we always tried to have what was called a 3.0 multiplier, meaning that you always wanted to have that number times your wage is your profit. So you can only imagine what that number would be if you tried to do engineering cost, having that outsourced all the time. And that's just on projects, so we feel like.
Are you asking for a raise then?
No, no, I'm just trying to basically justify. Well, of course, when the project's all done, one of the last components that we provide is project inspections. We go out on every trail project, make sure the concrete depth is correct, the concrete's poured correctly, that the base is in good working condition. We do all those inspections on, on trails, even buildings. As I was talking before with the public properties and the heating facility, we were part of that. Bottom right hand corner is curb and gutter on the street. We perform all the inspections on, on curb and gutter and the street construction. And last but not least, even some of the wastewater projects, we've done the inspection on. One of the key things to note on there with the staff that we have, do we have someone that's out there all day long? No, we inspect key components of the project to make it sure that it's built to our specifications, but we don't have someone out there all the time, so. With that being said, that's just kind of a quick summary of the Engineering Department. Glad to answer any questions on that.
I wish I had something that I could ask you that was really poignant, but I know.
All right, moving on.
Thanks again for doing that for me.
Was that? Oh, yeah, no problem. I guess on a note on.
We do spend an enormous amount of money on engineering though, outside of you, even without you. I can't imagine what we'd spend with.
Exactly. And the timeframe, I mean, you heard Terry talk about timeframe. I mean, just the time that we're allowed to go out and survey and get that in our office, get it designed and, and keep the departments moving forward on their projects, like even Steve with the water main systems. I mean, you're talking three projects that he tries to kick out in one summer.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have to set the parameters for it. We don't have to set up a bid. We don't have to do all that and wait for somebody to bid on it and then put the project, yeah, you're shortening down our timeframe.
Yeah, exactly, so. WPC, recently been in this role for the last two years. We have a staff of basically five full-time employees that you see there. Let me back up here. Well, I think there's a slide missing, but anyway. So as I already stated with the WPC, with the population that we have and the flow that we have over a million gallons that go to the plant on average, we're required to have a class three operator's license. And that's the class or test that I went and took and have that currently operator's license in my hands. We have three other staff members, four other staff members have class two operator's licenses and then other two employees have a part-time employee that doesn't have an operator license at all. But it says a lot that we have guys that even have class two working at the plant, so. Some of the particulars about the WPC, like I just said, we have one wastewater treatment facility for the population of 12,500 people. Of course, that plant is in operation 24/7. It's always in operation and we always have someone on call, even on the weekends, to make sure everything's running the way it needs to. We have six full-time employees and one part-time employee. Currently in their system, we have over 100 miles of our collection system. We have 1,800 manholes that we currently maintain. And we have nine live stations. And some of the probably most notable live stations we have are what we call number one, which is on the south side of Court Street by the river. And then we have number five, which is just north on Second Street, just north of the bridge there. That's number five, which services all the industrial park area. And then number six, which you've heard a lot about over by the old Stormcraft site, and that services all the area to north. That's probably our big three that we have. Those are the ones that we have to make sure are in operation, otherwise we'll be getting a lot of calls. And we do have all the other live stations, a little bit littler, but we can run around with a backup generator on those if we need to, if we have issues, so. We do have three siphons, I don't know if people understand that. But basically what that is, it's a sewer line that goes underneath the river and over on the other side and just by sheer hydraulic forces, it pushes it to the other side. So we have three of those currently in town that we have to maintain. On average, we have about 1.24 million gallons a day that go through the wastewater treatment plant. And with that being said, I'm kind of going to go into the process that we currently use for this. I'm going to kind of skip this so I can kind of get going here for you. In the top left-hand corner is the infant pump, pump station. That's where the flow comes into the plant at. So we have a bar screen in there that screens all the particulars out, but then we have pumps in there that pump it to the next stage, which is the aerated grit removal that you see just to the right. That's where it removes a lot of the inorganics, rocks, gravel and things like that out of the waste stream.
When, a quick question, when the, say, so do you have technology for contamination comes in and it shows up at that entry point, can you trace where that comes from fairly easily or not?
Not easily, but we can by sampling in our manholes. We can set up samplers at different locations and then we can try to track it down.
Because I'm sure that probably happens at times.
We have, yeah, we've had a lot of issues just even with fats, oils and greases being in the. You know, we can kind of track it down by going upstream in the manholes and seeing where that problems persist and then try to attack it that way. Yep. Next in our process is our. Next in our process is our primary clarifiers, which is the two smaller disc tanks and then our trickling filter, that's the heart of our treatment. And I'm going to get into these a little bit more specific. But after the trickling filter, it goes into the RBC, which is middle to the bottom of the screen. From there, it goes to the final clarifiers. From there, it goes back over to the UV disinfection and then it eventually goes out into the Big Blue River. So that just kind of gives you an overall picture of the site that we have out at the wastewater treatment plant. This is a flow schematic, I won't get into that. So I'm going to give you some of the piece of equipment that we have out here. This is our bar screen that we installed, I believe, in 2017. It's 55 feet deep to give you some indication on how deep that channel is and it comes in below and then we pump it up. But this bar screen, it takes out all the rags and paper material and things that are bigger than 3/8 of an inch. It takes those out of the stream. And it helps us, you know, in terms of sticks or other debris like that, gets them out of the system. I told you about our grit aeration. This is just the settling, all that basically is a tank that it comes in, the wastewater slows down and allows that grit to settle in the bottom and then we pull that grit out of the bottom with a pump, de-water it and then we haul it out to the landfill. Just in 2022, we had 19 tons of grit that we hauled out. If you recall, we're in the process of updating our grit system. With the new grit system, we'll probably triple that.
Really?
That's how much we think we're missing. This system is so old and undersized that that's how much we're missing. Grit is important in terms that takes up volume in our treatment tanks and to the abrasion of the grit destroys our pumps and other pieces of equipment, is why it's so important. So right now, when it comes out of this system, it kind of looks like coffee, but it has a very putrid smell to it, a lot of inorganics, things like that. With the new system that we're going to put in, it'll come out and look like play sand. And you can even, even some communities use it as base for some of the roadways or things like that, it comes out so clean.
We mix it in for dirt, right?
Yeah, exactly, for cover.
It's in the.
Yep.
Thing.
Yep. The primary clarifiers, these are next in the process and basically there's two tanks that are 55 feet in diameter and seven feet deep. Basically, these are settling tanks is all they are. This is the first stage of where the wastewater comes in and all the flocking material gets bunched together, it gets heavier than water and it settles out. When it settles to the bottom, we pull it off the bottom with pumps and it goes to our sludge holding tank and then we'll process it further from there. But there's weirs in there that the cleaner water goes over the weirs and goes to the next process, which is our trickling filter. This trickling filter is 146 feet in diameter and seven feet deep. And what you see there, the black, the black, you can barely see there, it's like a honeycombs, they're random media is what they are and it provides a surface for the bugs to attach to. These arms spin, the wastewater trickles over this media, the bugs take the food out of the waste stream and that's how it's treated. Water goes to the bottom, collects and then we have a recirculation pump that keeps going through the system and then it goes on to the next step, which is RBCs. These are basically the same thing, these are discs that are put on a long shaft horizontally. The bugs grow on those discs or that media and so it rotates through the waste stream and it collects the food, that process. The way the city Beatrice currently operates is during the summer, the trickling filter does most all the treatment because there's enough bugs and they're active enough that they can do most of the treatment. There will hardly be any growth on these discs in the RBCs during the summer, but when the temperature drops down to below 50, you'll start seeing these collect more and more moss looking or the bugs start growing on there more because this is a heated building. So that's what kind of takes over in the winter for us, why we're able to meet our permit limits is because of this process right here. Last but not least, is our final clarifier, so this is just where anything else that's in the stream is allowed to settle out and the clean water goes over the weirs again. And then we have our UV disinfection system. So the waste stream, there's basically bulbs in there that are about six foot long. We have two banks, 10 per bank, six bulbs, so we have 60 bulbs in there. And they are just that, they're bulbs that have the UV light that are emitted from these bulbs, the waste stream flows, they're actually down in the waste stream. And the wastewater goes through there, the bulbs are energized and it sterilizes the, anything that's left, the pathogens that are left in the waste stream. And from here on, it goes out to the Big Blue River.
Those bulbs are quite expensive for us.
We replace them once every two to three years and it's $30,000 for one bank. So, yeah. In terms of the biosolids, everything that's settled in the bottom, the tanks I told you about and that we pump out and put into holding tank, this is the project we just got done completing in 2021.
I remember.
Twenty?
I think it might have been 22.
Twenty, we started in 21 and ended in 22. These are two centrifuges and they are just what they sound. You put the waste stream in and they spin so fast that they de-water the biosolids and then we kick out into trucks, the solids, and again, they look like dried coffee grounds is what it comes out at. So it's a lot easier to work with, less water means less volume that we're hauling out to the landfill or that goes to compost site. So it's being reused again for compost, so it's kind of a continuous process that we have. As you can see to the right, there's a, there's a space, a concrete space there for another one. Right now, we can operate on one. We have two in there as a backup, if one went down, we have another one sitting there. But we know if we go to a different treatment process, we're going to produce a lot more biosolids, so we have a space to add a third one in the future. And then last but not least, the guys that are probably out there all the time that everybody sees is our jet and vac truck, they're out there almost every day jetting the lines or vacuuming out the lines and if we get a sewer call, if there's backup, they're the ones that are out there trying to see if it's on our system or someone else. But on average, we try to do enough lines every year that by the end of the third year that we've kind of done the whole town. So once every three years around, it depends on weather and things like that, but we try to make about once every three to four years that we've hit most of the town in terms of our sanitary sewer lines. With that, yeah.
Can I ask the multimillion dollar question?
Sure.
How'd our permit come in?
Came in very favorable to us. None of our permit really changed in terms of the ammonia or the BOD or TSS, that's all good, we can meet those limits then since our ammonia didn't go down further. They added a couple of things to us, instead of testing for, on the UV system, the E. coli, instead of testing once a week, we had to test three times a week. And they also added a fat, fat oil and grease test that we have to do once per year on our effluent as well. So that was pretty much our changes to the permit, so.
For our budget, gentlemen, that is huge savings.
At some point, you know, I hope that we're back here, given that we, you know, have 500 people come into town and I'm back here talking to you and saying, hey, we need to upsize the plant for an industry that's coming to town. One thing that's kind of always a trip hazard that Tobias and I is always talking about, there's two components to the wastewater treatment plant. Hydraulically, meaning the flow of water through the plant, we can handle a lot of flow, almost, I think up to six MGD, seven MGD we can handle. That doesn't mean we can treat that much, though. So that becomes a big issue, is yeah, the pipes are big enough and the flow, I can get the flow through the plant, but in order to treatment capacity and meeting our permit is what I really care about. And we're, we're on the ragged edge, we do a good job right now, but if we do get a so-called industry on there that's a high, high-load user, we'll see, we'll see what happens, it could be different. And that's why we have a pre-treatment program too, for a lot of these industries that are big users, we make them treat it down to domestic levels that we can handle. But that's a discussion that we have all the time with a new industry, is do you want the cost of treating it yourself and having to deal with all that, or do you want to help us expand our plant and we'll take on that burden by treating the wastewater for you? And so that's kind of the game that we play a little bit when we have a big industry that's wanting to come to town. So some of the residential rates on here is $12 per month. We do have an infrastructure improvement charge of $5 per month, that's looking forward in the future on the things that we know we have to do at the plant and at the lift stations. Unit charge, 1,000 gallons of water is $3.25. As most people want to know, let's see, average, who's, prior to the increase, increase was what, in 2017 was the last time we had an increase?
Right.
So.
And your infrastructure fees, what paid for your bar screen?
Yep.
Paid for new pumps in your headwork building, it paid for the de-watering that we just put in?
Yep.
It's what we use to pay for a lot of those improvements over the course of a couple of years?
And all the projects we have done are not the internal treatment component of the wastewater treatment plant, they've all been on the outside of the big treatment process, things that we needed to accomplish like the bar screen or the grit or UV, that's all on the outside of the actual pure treatment process. So if we ever get, I mean, those are plug and play, those we've made sure that we've improved, will be able to handle any treatment system that we put to it, those won't change. So those aren't dollars that are being wasted or not thought about for the future, so. One thing that we're really, we're really looking forward to fiber being in town just as much as anybody. All of our lift stations right now have alarm systems on them. Those alarms are sent back to the plant through wireless communication, line of sight, storms, everything like that, knock them out, my guys have to go out and check them. So by having fiber, we can have those fibers connect into our lift stations that'll help alleviate that and we can have a more sound system and have a real-time evaluation of how our pump stations are evaluating. So we're looking forward to that just as much as anybody.
Perfect. Perfect. James, thank you very much.
You bet.
Anybody else know there are many manholes in the city?
No. 1,800.
I tried sending my kids out to count one time, they didn't, they didn't fall for it.
They come back yet? You know, it's had none of the pictures for gross or anything like that, so if any of you want to come out, we'd be more than happy to give you a tour of the plant, so.
Very good. Okay, move on to city administrators' monthly report.
Yeah, as always, there's a bunch of information there, happy to answer your questions you might have. A couple of highlights, James mentioned the Pioneer Trail extension that's being poured as we speak, so I think they're getting close to have that thing wrapped up for us. The splash pad has been repaired temporarily, right? They hotwired it back together to get to work for a little while, as we still wait for the part to get here. Armor coating project went off last week. We like to give people more notice, but the contractor called us and said, hey, I'm going to be there in four days and if we don't take that window, we risk losing them for several months. And so we took what we can get and get notice out the best we can and keep moving forward, so.
Tobias, do we have somebody working in Plymouth to help them with their old houses, condemned houses?
No, not that I'm aware of, not any city employees that I'm aware of go help Plymouth out right now.
Okay, I was asked that question Saturday night, I saw a person that lives over there and I thought it was somebody from Beatrice.
You know, they may do it, if they do it, they're on their off hours, but I'm, they don't do it during city time, no.
Before we go to, before we go into executive session, the next regular city council meeting will be August 7th, right here at 7:00 PM.